I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, January 18, 2024. Will clerk Schmidt please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Trustee Maritado?
Here.
Trustee Pochek?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes, here.
Please stand and join me. I am the president of the United States of America.
Introduce yourself like for which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Community of announcement, our trustee Schmidt please.
Glendale Heights Police Department is now hiring new police officers. Applications are due by Thursday, February 1st. Join a team of hardworking individuals who have dedicated their careers to protecting and serving the residents of Glendale Heights while staying true to the community-oriented policing. Applications are available at Village Hall or can be downloaded from the Village website There is a mandatory orientation and written exam on Saturday, February 3rd at Mark Bart Middle School. For more information, please visit www.glandaleheights.org or contact the Glendale Heights Police Commission at 630-909-5398. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snow blow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. Thank you.
The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the public works garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, and LED lights, lot of lights. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call 630-260-6000. Stop by the Sports Hub on the first and third Thursdays of each month for the Glendale Heights seasonal market. Shop for food, produce, crafts, and more from locally sourced vendors. The market runs from 11 a.m. to 5 p.m. If you would like to be a vendor or for more information, please contact Tanya Michael at 630-909-5459.
Trustee Light?
Thank you. Join the Village Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection effort. Annually, the Village delivers beautifully written and decorated Valentine's cards collected from the community to Illinois veterans homes and veteran hospitals. Drop off your Valentine's at Village Hall by Wednesday, January 31st to ensure a timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter. Include social media contact information or envelopes with cards. If you have any questions, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
Clerk Schmidt please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president will be Saturday, February 3rd at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens from 10 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302 or call your local trustee.
Trustee Maritado?
Register today for the Mother-Son Dance or the Daddy-Daughter Dance. Be ready to have time of your life at the medieval times, theme dances. Enjoy an activity-filled evening, complete with dinner and dessert. The Mother-Son Dance will be Friday, February 23rd from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And the Daddy-Daughter Dance will be Saturday, February 24th from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Glendale Heights Scarf Club. Please register by February 19th. The registration fee is $75 for residents, $85 for non-residents, and $35 for each additional child. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at 630-260-6060. Thank you.
The police department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the village during snowfall. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow rub for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. And there is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. If you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070.
Trustee Schroder please.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is asking residents to check on their relatives and friends to assure they are not in need of assistance in extreme weather conditions. Glendale Heights has a warming center in place and is ready to assist the needs of our residents. For more information, call the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. And as a reminder, in any emergency, you should always call 911 for immediate assistance. During periods of extreme weather, the police department will activate the senior call list to check on senior citizens. Now seniors or their family members may ask to be placed on this list by picking up a form at the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens or by calling the police department's non-emergency number at 630-260-6070. On the Linda Jackson Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only? Anyone from public? None? You have the concept agenda before you work acting. Village Administrator Doug Flynn, please read the concept agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. One, approval of the regular board meeting minutes of January 4th, 2024. Approval of the committee of the whole meeting minutes of January 4th, 2024. Three, approval of the accounts payable listing of January 18th, 2024 in the amount of $5,545,113.23. Four, resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of award purchase order for the purchase and installation of office furniture for the Community Development Department. Five, resolution authorizing execution of the First Amendment to the contract with Udo Moss Landscaping Incorporated for additional mowing and landscaping services in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Six, a motion to approve pay request number 15 to V3 Construction Group Limited for the East Branch Two Page River Tributary. Number two, channel maintenance total amount not to exceed $3,982.50. Seven, motion to approve pay request number four to Trotter Associates for the Mill Pond Lift Station Improvement Project. Total amount not to exceed $290,188.61. Eight, motion to approve pay request number four to Bowler Construction Company Incorporated for the Water Supplies Facility Rehabilitation Project. Total amount not to exceed $11,991.60. Nine, motion to approve pay request number five to IHC Construction Companies LLC for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project. Total amount not to exceed $843,796.10. Ten, motion to approve pay request number five to Resource Environmental Solutions LLC for the Klein Creek Restoration Project. Total amount not to exceed $20,382.81. Eleven is approval of consent act.
Is there a motion to approve the concept agenda? Trustee Schmidt?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Roll call board please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, there's none. New business. A motion to waive first reading on new business items, number two through six. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two through six? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call board please.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two through six is approved. Number two, an ordinance granting an amendment to the conditional use for Prime Storage Glendale Heights LLC DBA Prime Storage located at 325 East Army Tail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois from January 4, 2024, COW. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2024-01. Is there a motion? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call board please.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-01 is approved. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Association Incorporated for the furnishing of design, build services for the wastewater treatment plant, influent pump stations, structural repairs, and maintenance improvement project for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2024-02. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02? I didn't motion for that.
So moved.
Trustee Siddiqui? Second. Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call board please.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of an entertainment permit for live concert for Jack's Pub and Grill located at 338 East Army Tail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2024-03. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-03? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schroder?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call board please.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-03 is approved. Number five, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of the entertainment permit for live entertainment for Schnitzplatz located at 729 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2024-04. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-04? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Pochek? Discussion. None. Roll call board please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-04 is approved. Number six, an ordinance to authorize the renewal of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Frontos Restaurant located at 260 Bloomingdale Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Request to waive first reading, ordinance 2024-05. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-05? Trustee Schroder?
So moved.
Trustee White?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call board please.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance 2024-05 is approved. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board on an agenda item only from public? Anyone? None? Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Trustee Schroder, second. Roll call board please.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Maritado?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. Trustee Siddiqui, you have the committee of the whole meeting.
I would like to call this committee of the whole meeting of Thursday, January 18, 2024, to order. Will the clerk please note who is present?
Noted.
Okay, does anyone have any additions or deletions? None. Okay, so discussion regarding portal tax.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Evening.
The Community Development Department is seeking guidance on modifying our existing hotel and motel ordinances, specifically the tax ordinance and the licensing ordinance in order to limit long-term rentals and establish a tax rate for such long-term rentals as they occur. A draft has been provided to you in advance. I'll quickly go over some of the highlights, the 30,000-foot view, and would welcome any feedback. We can go ahead and modify the draft for their discussion after tonight. So the first, the first group of ordinances we would like to amend are the tax code entitled three. Big picture, we wish to revise the definition of what a long-term stay is and establish a maximum length. Right now, our hotel ordinance provides for less than 50% of the rooms to be long-term rentals, and long-term rentals generally defined as longer than 29 or longer than 30 days. And so we can have up to 50% of the rooms in our hotels have these long-term rentals. And the first change we would like to bring forward is limiting that to 10%. And so the application of that would move forward to any, as I understand it, any future hotels. I should qualify quickly that some of these items are still in discussion with our village attorney and team, and so there might be tweaks to this based on their feedback, but we wanted to bring this forward so we can get some guidance and get it rolling. We also wish to establish, as I mentioned, a maximum length. So right now, the ordinances are silent on what the maximum length of stay is for a long-term rental. So conceivably, it's in perpetuity. We are proposing establishing a maximum length of 90 days. So that means that a long-term guest would be considered somebody who stays between 30 and 90 days in a hotel or motel establishment. Another thing that we need to do is revise the definition to establish a difference between what a hotel guest is, somebody who comes in for the weekend, maybe they're visiting family or attending an event in the area, versus somebody who's using it as apartment-style living. And so we need to add some tweaks to make a distinction between those two types of guests and how they're using the hotel or motel. We would like to increase, or I shouldn't say like, we are recommending a tax rate increase from 5 to 7%. That is pulling us closer in line to some of the neighboring municipalities that we reviewed to craft the draft ordinance that you have been provided. In addition, we are recommending establishing a monthly tax rate. So for stays greater than 29 days, those people who fall into that long-term category, establishing a tax, a discrete tax for that. The model for that, we have, we've reviewed Rosemont's draft ordinance. They have a fairly comprehensive one. And so what Rosemont has developed is a tax rate of $1,000 per month per room rental for a long-term stay. So if somebody were to stay for 90 days, the tax would be $1,000 per month for those two months in excess of that initial 29-day term. So that's the, again, that's the ordinance model that we followed. Would welcome additional feedback. For consideration, there might be value to establishing exemptions for people who work for the hotel, who might live in the hotel. There might also be opportunity to establish exemptions for business who, say a contractor comes into town to work on the cell phone towers for three months. They might want to rent out a block of rooms for their employees as they work on the cell phone towers. So there are opportunities and recommendations for exemptions in the draft as well. Couple other quick hits, we're recommending an increase in the fines to pull us closer in line to some of our neighboring communities. Try to pull that up really quickly. And we are also establishing adjudication judgments. So if the hotel is an offender, they will go through the code enforcement process, and should it go to adjudication, it establishes a tier of fines for a first offense and then subsequent offenses for some of their obligations to reporting based on the license requirements. And then the other code we want to revise is the license code, Title IV. And this revision is just to establish or revise the definition as it currently exists to match what we're proposing in the tax code. So it's good housekeeping, making sure both definitions are the same. So those are like the really quick hits, 30,000-foot flyover. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and again, I'm seeking guidance. Trustee White?
How many rooms is actually 10%?
They have 80 rooms, plus or minus a handful, I want to say 80. So 10% would be eight rooms.
Okay. The 30 and... Did that finish between hotel and motel? We'll have to break that down still, yeah, according to legal or we have a good...
So the definition is effectively the same. It points back to itself in a way that it really only provides a way for a hotel proper, but it's effectively the same.
All right. Exemptions, will they have to apply for these exemptions if they're going to stay longer than the 30 days? Something that we would know about, because how are we going to follow through with this if they're staying past that 29-day mark? They would have to apply for something, no?
So there's like three answers to that question. The first...
Yeah, no.
The first is we have to confirm the legal tenability of the exemptions. And so that's still something we're in discussion with the village attorney about what exemptions are applicable and what are not. In terms of applying, some of the conversation circles back to the reporting requirements of the hotel and how we enforce those requirements when they're not satisfactorily met. They could apply. The cumbersome part is on the accountability side of it, where we need to confirm they're meeting the conditions of whatever they've stated to us. If they've applied for X amount of rooms and they haven't met X amount of rooms, we have to invest resources to identify that. And it's a little bit tricky in that environment, so a lot of that hasn't perfectly been vetted out. So I would say ideally, yes, it doesn't hurt us to establish an application, but there's an enforcement component to this that is still nuanced.
That was part of my other question was enforcement. How about room access during these long-term stays? If we need to get in there for whatever reason be, whether it be inspections or for whatever, is it going to be a problem?
I think the answer is yes and no. I think formally by ordinance, we have the right to demand entry. I think practically, there are legal nuances that need to be considered before doing so, and I think certainly it would need to be done with the coordination of the police department based on legal counsel.
Calls for service per se, you know, if something were to arise for that, I mean...
But calls for service or like, are we demanding entry?
Well, I'm saying if there's calls for service repeatedly, like we have with our rental programs, do we have a right to be able to have somebody seek other shelter or if it becomes a problem? That's what I'm asking.
You're saying to remove them from the hotel?
Yeah, to remove them or have them, I mean, if it's something or something to protect them.
No. It would be incumbent on the hotel owner...
Yeah, the hotel has the authority to remove somebody from their hotel.
Okay.
We don't have the authority to make him remove somebody from his hotel.
Can they be held liable and can they be held accountable if they don't do so, if they do have a problem?
No, I mean, people have, still have, you rent a hotel, and you still have an expectation of privacy in that room.
Correct.
And we just can't at-will search or go in there and...
No, I'm saying if it becomes a problem and there's calls for service for the police department, they're repeatedly in a short period of a month, and they're a long-term, does it become a problem of ours or the hotel's?
It's a both, right? But our ordinance on... Our rentals doesn't apply to our hotel. It applies to rental properties, not to our hotel.
When does it become our rental property? When it's registered?
It's because it's commercial. Yeah. Our rental is more residential, single-family or multifamily? The, doesn't, it doesn't apply to the hotel, and the rules that we have in place for our rental program do not apply to people renting a room at the hotel. Sound business practices, you would expect the owner to not want that person there to take action to get rid of that person.
Correct. But not knowing what the future brings.
Correct.
To maybe add to that, I should note that in practice, we do treat the hotel in some respects similarly to the rentals in terms of by ordinance, we have a right to demand inspection, right? But their obligation to comply differs, I think, is the distinction.
Okay. I got more questions, but go ahead and let everyone else go. I'll be here all day.
So what are you looking for, direction, how to do this or...
I think the first thing I'd like is to understand that this kind of
concept.
Concept is something that is desirable, right? And if there's components of this that you don't like, we can omit them. If there's something that we haven't considered that you'd like us to investigate, we can bring that forward and discuss it more.
I think if the, if the concept of what Director Todor Orick has talked about tonight is acceptable to the board, we'll bring back an ordinance next board meeting with the contents of what he's talked about and bring it presented to the board for your approval. And you can, you know, we can take any questions then if there's any concerns. But certainly the concept of what we talked about tonight, bring it back in an ordinance form at the next board meeting and get it from the board for more questions or passage. So, okay, I mean, I like it.
Yeah.
I think we should do it.
So I believe the whole reason behind this is that you want to differentiate between a rental property and, you know, short-term stay.
Correct.
So you want to have a difference between those, so no one can misuse the hotel as a long-term rental and, you know, think that, you know, they can have it for six or eight months.
That's absolutely correct. We're trying to limit that amount, the amount of the apartment-style living and establish a way to tax those activities because right now the code is silent and the hotel is exempt from paying occupancy tax for a long-term rental.
So I have a question. So you mentioned about the exemptions, so, you know, so let's say a cell tower employee, and it makes sense, you know, they are here for three months or four months. So how can you... So how can you verify, let's say the hotel owner comes to you and say, hey, these are all the, you know, cell tower employee or they are contractors, how we can uh implement this ordinance? And how can we verify whether they are real? You know, they can come with any excuses. How we can validate that or how we can enforce this ordinance at that time?
Ad admittedly, the enforcement side of it is the hardest part. Um we we have rights to to charge the hotel to provide us their books to to review those. Um but actually vetting that out to be accurate can be a very resource-intensive process and and all of those activities and and who who is, who the person is, uh I guess a better way to to state this is we have different rights from an enforcement standpoint than does the police department, than does finance, and it's kind of a collaborative effort. So it's it's something we would have to discuss how to best enforce.
Okay.
And just to clarify, the exemption is not from the ninety days, it's from having to pay the thousand-dollar tax per month.
Okay.
Just so they can, they're still capped at ninety days, even if it's, I'm booking a bunch of rooms for my employees, they're still capped at ninety.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, you answered my question really good this afternoon, but I have one more. You had mentioned so many employees of the hotel live there. Do you have control how many are gonna stay in that room? They don't want, I don't want somebody to bring in their family in or other members. You know what I'm saying?
I do. And and it by we conduct, we are now conducting annual inspections of the hotel much the same as any other rental property. So we only know what we identify as we're allowed entry into the rooms. So I I think to directly answer your question, I I wouldn't categorize it as controlled because we can't stop something until after it's already occurred, right? We we've identified it. So I I think the answer is somewhat, we have, we have the right, but it still falls in onto our plate to identify that activities that that shouldn't be occurring overcrowding or or whatever other activity is. Maybe it's um hoarding. Uh we still have to identify that, and that's why we have an annual inspection in place now. But it it's conceivable we might not find out about it for a period of time.
Okay, thank you.
And occupancy is based upon square footage of the room.
Yes.
Yep.
What?
So the the amount of people that can stay within a room is is regulated by how big the room is, how many square.
Right, I understand that.
So we couldn't, we couldn't do it like you were saying, family, we can't do it based upon a family, but about how many people are gonna be staying.
Okay, trustee Schroder?
Yes, uh Mike, you said you're not uh con- uh doing constant inspections. I do want, I don't wanna name the hotel unless you want me to, but I had friends who stayed at one of our hotels recently and said the room was a disaster. The conditions there were horrible. Uh they couldn't wait to get out of there fast enough. I had to bring them to my home. They couldn't stay there any longer. Is there anyone that checks on on the condition of these hotels?
Yes, so um when I came on board, it was brought to my attention the conditions of the hotel. And I I'm not sure when you got this feedback to, to the credit of the hotel, they have been largely moving in the right direction of compliance. We established um a set of guidelines for them to follow. They they have been fairly compliant, but not completely compliant. So we are um taking enforcement action to bring them along to a place where um they're they're meeting our codes. And and we've, we've made a lot of headway in that direction in the last year. I I shouldn't say last year, in the last six or seven months. And and I hope to reach resolution shortly, but in the interim, we are taking the appropriate enforcement action to get compliance.
Cause don't forget, if the conditions in the hotel are better than they are right now, they'd be getting more residents coming in and people from out of town. And we would be making more money, but if their conditions over there are terrible, I I think somebody should look into it and.
It, yes, we have. And I I should also note that the um formally, the the ownership hasn't changed, but there's a a a new member of the ownership running the hotel who is working with us. So we we've been able to get a lot of compliance and um by and large, a lot of things I'm hearing from my code enforcement officers who are conducting the inspections is uh they are significantly improving and we're just going to uh continue to work with them to ensure they 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 get to a place where we're where we're comfortable and satisfied.
Uh thank you.
Okay, uh trustee Smith?
If you have a, an occupant that stays ninety days, how soon after that ninety-day period can they re-up for another ninety-day period?
Seven days. So they need to vacate the building for seven days. So um what that is doing is prohibiting the internal movement, you know, from one room to another where people remain in perpetuity. And so it's saying you you need to physically leave the premises, you need to leave the building for a period of one week before you can check back in. So that that was a similar guidance or a similar structure that we found in our review of other ordinances.
It that also doesn't, it also doesn't matter what room you stay in, right? If you're in the building and switch hotel rooms five times, you still have, that ninety days still applies to the whole stay, not each room.
Okay, anyone else? None, okay. Uh move to number two, snow cleanup recognition. Mr. Flynn, you have something?
Yeah, so uh I just wanna say thank you to Rachel and her public work staff and the snow crew for the last really ten days. Uh they really haven't had a night off, except for a couple in plowing. They were out last night. They spent all last weekend uh plowing and keeping the streets clean. And I will tell you, the streets were a hundred percent cleaner than mine where I live. It was well done. They did a great job. And just kudos to everybody who participated in uh Snow Command and and appreciate all the hard work they put in. And David was out with them for a little bit and he's got some uh video footage of uh the snow.
So you got drone for that? Okay.
Put GoPros on the sleigh, I like. So just a little something to say thank you to all the drivers and all the guys who are out there shoveling snow and taking care of the complex here. And uh we had more snow a little bit last night. They came in. We got more snow coming tonight. They're gonna be in. So they've been kind of working around the clock for last two weeks or so, ten days. So just wanna say thank you to them.
That's great, go. All right, uh is there anyone in the public that would like to address the board? Name and address, and I hope light is not gonna see, so you are.
But I prefer it the other way.
I'm a man.
Ed Pope, Wayne Avenue. I got a complicated question, but maybe it's a short answer. It's either gonna be Peter, maybe the chief, maybe Doug, I don't know. I had a really interesting conversation with one of the officers and we we really got into this deep conversation. And Peter, put your phone down. You're scaring me. He brought up an interesting point about the money that the road tax is making, and you know, it's it's a substantial amount. And I understand that it's always gone into the general fund, but it used to be a lot less money. And then when he started telling me about the things that the police department needs, but they have to like and I'm paraphrasing, like requisition to get what they want, even though they're generating this massive amount of money now. Could the board give them a portion of that money uh into their own budget? Which I know in the past we never did because, you know, it wasn't that kind of money, but with the amount of money they're generating, I know by ordinance, according to the officer I was chatting with, that um that's the way it's still done. But he made a good point of, it's like you guys aren't profiting from the money that you're generating. Although he said you can, you know, you can request like things like this new truck that you need and that stuff. But why doesn't part of that go into your own budget rather than just the general fund? I guess this is my long-winded question.
Well, it does because their their funding comes from the general fund.
Right, but I'm saying a percentage of what they take. So let's just use fake math that they brought in a million dollars. Why can't twenty percent be designated directly to the police department for what they need rather than saying whatever that twenty percent worth of things is, they have to come and ask you for?
Well, the police department has never not received anything they've ever wanted.
I don't think that's true, according to what I was just talking to you about, but.
Well, I mean, within reason.
When I introduce.
I'm not saying give the store away. I'm sorry, George.
When I introduce the the truck enforcement unit to this, the whole idea was to try to alleviate some of the tax burden on the residents because road repairs are a lot of money. So the whole idea, that was the whole idea behind it. And I'll tell you, the board has been great in providing, providing the police department funds to push that forward too. So that included adding a second officer to that enforcement unit.
You just bought scales for him, right?
Yeah, so they.
You just bought a new truck for him.
Right, so they, they, and uh anything that, not anything, but most things that we need, the needed things the police department, the board supports us getting.
I'm not saying they didn't. I think you're misunderstanding my question. I feel like I'm getting a little animosity here from Doug. It you're not, the question is
It's a little piecemeal.
Is that they, that that, you know, it, if you do the job for something, you know, why shouldn't a portion of that be dogged to that department? You know what I mean? That that's my only question. I know by ordinance, it never has been in the past, but his question to me was, could it, should it?
Well, what I'm saying is, but it 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 does filter back to department, right?
By request, though. I mean, you know, there's probably tons of things that departments could use.
But every department needs equipment and money, right? And the police department um really doesn't lap for anything. I can tell you that from being in there for thirty-three years. And the equipment that, that money, that revenue from truck enforcement has produced, we're thankful for. And it does go right back into uh their their equipment for, I mean, those truck scales were pretty expensive. That new truck for them was pretty expensive.
As he, he did say that to me. I I, that part I get.
Sure.
I'm just saying though is if, you know, you dogged twenty percent of it to go directly to the PD rather than them having to requisition everything they needed, is that an option? Can you do that by ordinance?
So there's, there's, and what you're referring to is kind of like uh drug acid forfeitures. But drug acid forfeitures, we can only use that. So the money that we get, let's say that there is somebody who was selling drugs and we receive the money from that, that goes to court and we get a percentage of it. We can only use that for education for, about the use of drugs or the enforcement of drugs. So it has to go to particular things. So if we did that for truck enforcement, that money would have to go for traffic enforcement. And that'd be a lot of money. And I think that's the difference in it. There's so many more.
Oh yeah, I see what you're saying, okay.
The other part of that is, when we added the truck enforcement and the new tack unit, we were also able to hire two guys to cover for the truck enforcement, right? So we added, we went from fifty-five police officers to fifty-seven, right? Cause those two truck enforcement officers don't count as manpower.
Okay.
Right? So we added two, two people to the, to the police department as manpower to replace those truck guys and our tack guys, right? So that um revenue from truck enforcement goes directly to paying for two other guys, right? And that's, and that's your, that's your ten, that's your ten percent.
Twenty, yeah, right.
Right, twenty percent. And that goes directly to paying those two extra officers. So when we, when George did that, going from fifty-five to fifty-seven, we've had the truck unit for how many years? Two years?
About three, yeah.
So we before, as the truck unit came into into fruition, we added from fifty-five to fifty-seven. It wasn't until January of this year that we just instituted the tack unit. We haven't replaced those guys. They actually count as manpower or can count as manpower, but the truck guys don't, right? Their sole responsibility is truck enforcement. So we replaced those two guys and their, the the revenues they generate from truck enforcement directly pays for the people to replace them as manpower.
Okay, okay. So George, you're saying that so like, cause that's what I thought of when we were talking about. It was like the drug money, how that's proprietary to the PD, but it has a specific use. And if you are to retool the ordinance for that, you would have to do something similar, say, okay, which I get what Doug's saying now. It kind of makes sense. You're already automatically getting ten percent of it just for your manpower. But for other miscellaneous things, it would have to be dogged, something specific, because that drug money doesn't go back to the village.
Correct.
It's 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 about twenty percent of of what they bring in, maybe, maybe a little bit more, but honestly.
Yeah, I I I'll be honest with you. I didn't think about the manpower portion of it and how much money that actually costs right up front, so. All right, well, thanks for answering my question.
I have a quick question on that, George, real fast, sorry. Where, we have a new truck. Where is the new truck? I haven't seen it out.
So had, is we're waiting for the, it it's at Public Works right now. The mechanics did a great job outfitting it. We're just waiting for the top of the uh truck bed.
Oh, for it to come in, for it to come in, okay.
Right. Anyone else? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn? You didn't show up. Don't have time.
Kim, you don't have time. Kim Darlin, Greenbrier Drive. My favorite question, what are we doing with cricket?
Now everybody looks at me cause I'm.
I'll, I'll, I like to answer that.
Okay.
We haven't done anything. It's on the back burner right now.
Thank you.
Uh uh the reason for that is we have other issues in front of us. And Mr. Coker never talks to none of the trustees about the cricket.
I'm not here to fight. I'm just asking you a question.
And I'm just wondering, I I smell a rap in, I, with that question. I feel that he talked to you about asking us. That's my opinion.
I don't talk too shadry. Nice try, Chester.
Well, uh, I disagree with you. So anybody else who wants to add anything?
Well, you feel free to disagree all you want.
Oh, I know that. It's the public.
Thank you.
Let me go. Uh Ms. Kim, did I talk with you about?
No. Keith, what's going on?
I can't, I can't have no way of proving it. It's my opinion.
It doesn't have to be proof. I'm asking.
I've never seen you at any, I've never seen you at any cricket games. Never.
It's because I don't like cricket.
Okay, so we have no direction yet on cricket.
Right.
Yes, okay.
It's on the back burner.
Okay, but cricket starts April first. We have no idea.
We have no direction yet on cricket.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion. I made the second.
Roll call. All sit down.
You can just do it. You can do voiceful.
Okay, voiceful.
All in favor, no.
All in favor? This meeting is adjourned.